Evening, everybody. It is August eighth and this is the future public meeting of the Town of Concord zoning board of appeals. With me here tonight are from the Town of Concord, Kim Johnson and I think Paul Creedon, our building inspector is here as well. The CBA members present tonight and will do a roll call here is Ms. Elizabeth Dwyer-Lennett.
Here.
Mr. Ravi Fia.
Here.
And Mr. Thomas Swain. Tom?
Oh, he's frozen.
Tom's frozen again.
There he is.
Yep, now I'm back, I'm back. I don't know why it happens, but it does.
Yeah, and Chair Terry Kinnaman is here as well, obviously. So let's kick it off tonight, the seven o'clock hearing. Richard Loughlin Jr. for Coldwell Banker for a special permit on the zoning bylaw section five, four, five, and eleven, six, to hold a one-day large outdoor event at eleven Main Street. Anybody here to speak for the applicant?
Diana Jarvis, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right, we did this event last year.
Name, 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 name an address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Diana Jarvis with Coldwell Banker, eleven Main Street, Concord, Massachusetts.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So I'm new at this, so you're gonna tell me what you want me to do.
Yeah, yeah, no, we'll help you along. So go ahead, present what you, what you want to do.
So we did this last year. Several of our agents work for Open Table, which is a food pantry that services the local community. We're very into, into food in securities. So as real estate agents, we see all the time, people ask us when they're moving out, can you take this? Can you take that? Please get rid of this for me. So we decided to use this inventory, if you want to say. And we have, we had a flea market last year with a hundred percent of the proceeds going to Open Table. Open Table also had a booth there for informational purposes and to take cash donations as well. We earned just under two thousand dollars. And what, what we didn't sell, household goods, I don't know if you're familiar with household goods in Acton. If your house burns down, if you're living, leaving a battered situation, you can go and take anything you need to rebuild a household. So household goods took a lot of things and then what was left over, we donated to epilepsy. So we had, we basically hit three different charities with our event. And it's just a nice community building, team building event. And we have it in the back parking lot behind eleven Main Street. It's quite a large parking lot. And we have drop tables and tents and the merchandise is on the tables. We probably have around nine drop tables. There's six quick tables back there. And we have a cash table, wrapping table. I'm in Bedford Rotary and I was responsible for running the Bedford Day, our Bedford Day event with the tents and working with the town and everything. So this is kind of, it's very similar to that. So it went pretty well, it was very well organized and we were just happy with what we did for all the charities that ended up benefiting from it.
Terrific. Thank you so much for, for that presentation. Are there any questions from the board members?
Did you need, did you need any police detail out on Main Street?
No, not to my knowledge. We had like, like around a hundred and fifty people that actually came to it. It was never really overly crowded. We do have, yeah, I didn't feel the crowd was an issue whatsoever. We do, we did have insurance through Coldwell Banker that the town requires from Aon Risk Services in New Jersey. And we can, you know, obviously provide you with that once the date gets confirmed.
Actually, there is a certificate of insurance on file here on now.
Yeah, that's for last year and we'll just duplicate that or replicate that. Yeah.
Terrific, thank you. Elizabeth, you had a question?
Yeah, and so it looks like it will be basically the same event that you did last year.
Correct.
No changes?
No changes, except for the date. The date moved back a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, but as far as the logistics and the amount of space.
Exactly, same thing, exactly.
Great.
In the parking lot, we don't take up the whole parking lot. It's quite large. So a lot of the people that come to help set up, we park back there and then the tables take the front part. So we're not going to be using any parking spaces for ourselves.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Oh, that's a concern. Yeah.
Right, right. Ravi, are you all set?
Well, the bylaw talks about any building or premises owned or operated by a private lodge or club. Are we considering Coldwell Banker to be a private club or are we just sort of considering Open Table to be that?
Ravi, I think if you read on, that, that would be by right. Anything other than that is a special permit. That's why they're going for special permit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Paul, since, since we have you here, any, anything to note from last year's event?
No, we have no issues at all, no complaints. And the, the town news group reviewed this as well. And, and, and they have no issues with it forward.
Okay. Ravi, was that it or?
Yeah, no, that's it. I'm totally fine with this.
Terrific. Let me open it up for the public. If there's anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this petition, please raise your hand. Not seeing anybody. I will close the public comment section of this hearing and bring it back to the board. Members of the board, what do you fancy? Do you need to discuss? Do I want to do a motion?
I'd be happy to make a motion unless anyone else wants to discuss. Okay, great. I move to grant a special permit under zoning bylaws section five point four point five and eleven point six to hold a one-day large outdoor event at eleven Main Street.
Second. All those in favor? Elizabeth Dwyer-Lennett. Mr. Ravi Fia.
Hi.
And Chair votes aye as well. Congratulations and good luck with your event. Hopefully it's a smashing success.
Yep, I'm, I'm excited. Thank you for your support and your time.
No problem.
Of course, okay.
Thank you.
Next item on, on the agenda, it's seven to five and I'm apologizing in advance and butchering names here. Zlada Govdeanov, and you can correct me, for a special permit on the zoning bylaw sections seven, one, five, and eleven, six to construct a one thousand nine hundred and twenty square foot addition on a one thousand two hundred and sixty-eight square foot non-conforming single-family dwelling that increases the gross floor area by more than fifty percent at twenty-three Hill Street. Who's here to speak for the applicant?
Can you hear us and can you see the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes to both.
Yeah, I hope it's gonna visually help you. So this is our house in West Concord. It's our first house. We came here in twenty twenty. And it's one of the smallest houses, I'd say, for the Concord and for our street. So we would like to, and, and, and we don't have garage and potentially additional room. And we are, we were, we were hoping to be able to build a two-car garage with a room on top and additional room next to garage with a small bathroom. And that would be on the right side of the house. You can see here, very old shed. That would go away. And this is another view. So this is the house and the extension or detached garage would be here. I'm providing here a Google Maps view such that you see that the area is quite greenish. The house here, this is, this is our house and then we would have this detached garage with extra playrooms in, 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 instead of the shed, very old sheds will go away. So we are quite surrounded by some greenness in nature and we're hoping it wouldn't bother our neighbors to extend on this. This is the existing house and its size and where it's located. It's non-conforming because it was built before these rules were established. And this is the proposed garage with extra rooms. You see some of the shed will get replaced by that. And we are here today because the size of our proposed new dwelling is a little bit bigger than our existing house. And our house is about thousand, I'll get into numbers. It's about a little over thousand square feet, thousand two hundred. And why we're doing this, this is the floor plan of our existing house. With, starting with the main floor, we have a sunny room, kitchen, bathroom, and little dining and living area with a den over here. And then upstairs, we have two rooms, no bathroom. And then we have basement that is yours, used for storage facility and other recreation room. Patio is just a paved patio and then the work shed will go away. And then the new dwelling would have space for two, for two cars over here. A gym or area that is equivalent to what's the shed right now on the first floor and then on the second floor, there would be a playroom of a larger size with a small bathroom. So the extension or the garage with the room would look like this. As you can see, it's really tight for, 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 for two cars. I mean, not too tight, like, but and then this is additional gym area over here and then the stairs would lead up here in the playroom. And now I'm getting to the numbers. The total gross floor area with the shed is currently thousand four hundred seventy-four. For the house without shed, it was calculated to a thousand two hundred sixty-eight square feet. Extension without calculating the shed, it's thousand seven hundred something. So you can see it's bigger than the existing house with the shed. And then extension total, that is with the shed being removed, it's thousand nine hundred. And the total house with extension is going to be three thousand one hundred ninety-six square feet. So I was wondering, I've seen many big houses in Concord, so I was wondering what, what is the average size of the houses? I couldn't, I couldn't find the average size of all houses, but the average size of new houses in Concord from nineteen, nineteen eighty was three thousand hundred something and then increased to almost ten thousand. But what, these numbers are not completely corrected. So the information is to be taken with a grain of salt. And so I hope we're, we're in the reasonable range of, of the size. So really, it's gonna be three, like, three-bedroom house over here with two bathrooms, one in the basement, one on the main floor. And then here we will have a garage finally that we were hoping to have with extra playrooms. And we would use the same driveway for this house and for this detached garage. And again, this old shed will go away because it's in a bad condition. I hope this makes sense. I'm open to any questions and yeah, I would like to hear from you what you think.
Thank, thank you for the presentations, members of the board. Any, any questions from the board?
Yeah, so you know, just for the applicant, usually when we're looking at these applications, we're focused on the neighborhood rather than the entire town. I don't know, Paul, it seemed like this might be non-conforming because it's in the setback, not because this is a neighborhood full of undersized lots. Like, do we know if there's other non-conforming lots around this or is this pretty unique for the street?
Yeah, I don't know, Ravi.
Again, and I'm, I'm actually looking at the, at Google Street View here and there, there's a few bigger, bigger homes. There's a small one here as well, but there's, there's a few bigger homes on the street as well.
Yeah, and then I guess my other question is, you know, I think this is a great addition. I didn't know if there was also some other plans in the pipelines for the main structure at all or?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
If, if there was any kind of plan for the main structure as well, or it's just the garage that you're looking at?
The main structure as it existing house? That won't be changed?
Yeah.
So then a question here. So you're adding a bath, bathroom, but you're not adding a bedroom per se in this proposed building, right? So?
Exactly. There isn't no bedroom.
It's a playroom, okay, so. And this, this upset, the second floor has its own dedicated entrance, right? That's separate from?
Garage.
From, from the garage and that exercise room, right?
Correct.
So I, so in, in general, I don't, you know, I, I don't want this playroom to become a bedroom, I think, you know, that's, that's would be my worry because I think, you know, looking at, at the plan you have, your existing septic system might not be the newest of septic systems and, and adding. I mean, it looks like if you go to your, your site plan, it looks like there is a, it's not even trenches, but there is a leaching pit. And so adding, adding this as a bedroom.
It's not, yeah.
Would not, would, would not be, and I, and I know you, you don't have, it's not a bed, it's called a playroom, but given that it has its separate entrance, et cetera, it could, it could well become in the future, a, whether it's for you or whether you sell the house and somebody else takes up the house. I, it would worry me that, that somebody then just makes it into a bedroom and then therefore makes it non-compliant as far as the Board of Health goes.
If I can say, I'm, Zino, I'm Zlata's husband. She's a lot more well-spoken, but just to go back to the existing dwelling plans. So right now we have three bedrooms in the house and it's only two of us. If you look here, like the living room and the dining room, they're like split by this staircase right in the middle. So we have the bedroom that more than we need is just like everything else, like the, like areas, like a playroom. That's got that kind of stuff. We do not have plans to transform it into a bedroom and we do not have plans to sell the house in the nearby future either. I cannot speak like if ever we sell it, whoever's gonna move in in this hypothetical scenario, what they do with it. I'm just like speaking like for our family, what the plan would be.
Yeah, I think we're planning really to expand the family and then that's why we need really space, but then our projections of what future people could do, really, it's beyond anything that we can control. And I would be very grateful if the city could do something like for future on commerce that they're aware, but like limiting us as of now. Yeah, I understand your concern though, but
Yeah.
I think, I, I, I don't like to speak publicly about it, but there, we listed out the personal reasons why we're planning like a huge family and currently our house is thousand and some thousand two hundred square feet. And all our bedrooms are, especially the, on the first floor, small, so. And then we have upstairs the study room too. So essentially we would need a space where we would be playing with the kids and that is of a larger size. Right now in-house, we're very can I say like crunched or?
Yeah. Okay. I am, I'm gonna open it up for the public, members of the public. If there's any comment, please raise your hand. Anybody who wants to speak to this application? Seeing none, then I'm gonna close the public comment section. And did you, as to the applicant, this, did you talk to your neighbors about this? Did you solicit any input?
Yes, we did talk to them.
We, we have verbal confirmation from the neighbor across the street and the one immediately next to our, our left. They are totally fine with it just because like, like, we, we don't really share space with, with the one across the street, but the one to our left, there's like another, they have their own shed between our house and their house. It's like two sheds and a bit of a distance. Their playroom space.
So we're on the further left, they're on the further right of their properties, such that we have. But if needed, we can send over recommendations from them or the references or.
You know, that's, that's quite okay. Thank you for that offer. But if you talk to them and they haven't shown up here, I think that's that's, that's efficient for us. And you mentioned that you, you are gonna be using the same curb cut? Curb cut will not be changed?
I'm sorry?
Look, you, you mentioned that you're gonna use the same curb cut as is currently existing. You're not adjusting the curb cut at all? The driveway, where, where the driveway hits the street.
Yeah, yeah, the driveway stays the same. It's gonna be the same entrance from here to, into the garage.
Good, good. Thank you, thank you. Members of the board, any, any comments for the discussion? Motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it seems like a lot of square footage, but actually it's just slightly expanded two-car garage that's in sort of proportion with the house. If you look down Hill Street, it seems like there are you know, houses with two-car garages around in the neighborhood and it doesn't seem out of keeping, so.
Yeah, and it, and it feels like a, a really big expansion, but that's also because the existing house is so small, I think.
Exactly, right, yeah.
You know, it's just that, and, and I think, you know, having the, the curb cut the same, the driveway the same, sort of like, sort of visually on the street, not too much changes. And obviously, the entire building sits within the setbacks. So I think that's, that's also good. So.
Yeah, I think this is making the house more usable for your family in the future. And then if you were to sell it and, and of course, it would be specified that the playroom isn't a bedroom. But having raised children, I think you'd be very happy to have a separate playspace where you won't have lots and lots of things right underfoot in a smaller.
Where you can step on Legos, that's what you meant?
Yeah, I was gonna say step on Legos, but I didn't. Yeah.
Thank you so much, Ravi.
I would, I would make a motion if anybody.
No, be my guest.
Okay, I move that we grant a special permit under zoning bylaw section seven point one point five and eleven point six to construct a one thousand nine hundred and twenty square foot addition on a one thousand two hundred sixty-eight square foot non-conforming single-family dwelling that increases the gross floor area by more than fifty percent at twenty-three Hill Street.
Second.
All those in favor, Ms. Dwyer-Lennett?
Aye.
Mr. Fia?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. So, thank you. Congratulations. Next item on the agenda and I, before I read this, Thomas, Mr. Swain is gonna recuse himself from the next item. So Tom, if you could, I'm gonna mute you, which I already did, but if you can turn off your, your video, that would be great too. Thank you. For that, seven ten, Middlesex School for a special permit and site plan review on the zoning bylaw section six to eleven, eleven, six, and eleven, eight for a new athletics practice facility with a height waiver to seventy-two feet, nine inches at fourteen hundred, excuse me, fourteen hundred Lowell Road. Anybody here to speak for the applicant?
Yes.
Miss, go ahead, Miss Ash.
Great. So Lonnie Ash, architect with CBT, and there are a few others. Steve and Kurt, I'll let you introduce yourselves.
Hi, Kurt.
Steve Ventresco. Oh, go ahead, Kurt.
I'm sorry, sorry, Steve. Kurt McCroy with Middlesex.
Steven Ventresco with Niche Engineering.
Great. Great. So sharing my screen. Okay, so we are here on behalf of the Middlesex School to request relief for the height of a new field house building. There are in this presentation more slides than I will talk about, but obviously we can rewind and come back for any questions.
Good.
Starting with the images of the field house and I'll talk about kind of what the field house is and the purpose of it. So the school developed a study of the athletics program a few years ago and the result of that was the need for more practice space and the need for more athletic, just square footage to accomplish the athletic mission on the campus. This really was scheduling, kids staying late due to the limited practice facilities, inclement weather practice, really a facility needed to expand the practice primarily of the athletic program at the school. The building itself is located adjacent to the existing athletic complex, which is of course a smattering of, of buildings with, on the right here, you can see the existing orgym, but the image of the field house from the south fields here and we'll get into the elevations that talk about the height, but the building itself fits within the campus aesthetic. The classical kind of neo-Georgian view, which is why we have the gable roof. We have kind of the symmetry along it and that goes into what we'll talk about when we get to the, the discussion of the height. And this, these views just give you an idea of the, the program, which is important in that discussion. There is the, the multipurpose courts inside the building. There is the second level track, which you see here. And just the, the nature of that program, it does need just the height to actually function as the building that is, that it is being designed as. As I mentioned, the building is about just under a hundred thousand square feet. There is parking on the lower level at grade. There are three, all, three all-purpose courts, track, training rooms, some rehab space. And really, the facility is meant to serve all the schools. This isn't the facility that's just for, you know, varsity sports. And this is really about expanding the options and making sure that everyone on campus has really engages in that athletic instruction. As I mentioned, the building is located adjacent to the existing athletic structure on the northwest side of the site. And it is kind of, it is relatively close to Lowell Road. Between our building and Lowell Road are the faculty houses that were completed last year. And Steve, feel free to jump in here, but I will go past the utility and site plan. And if we need to circle back to those, we can circle back to that.
Yeah, exactly.
So the height, so we are in Residence AA zoning district. There is a thirty-five foot height limit. Our building is just under seventy-three feet to the peak of the gable roof. The kind of main volume of the building is about forty-two feet. And as you saw in the interior view, the height that just that you need just for the multipurpose courts combined with the aesthetic that we are matching with the current campus aesthetic of that neo-Georgian, neoclassical, it did push the, the roof, you know. That is one of the reasons that the, the roof is the seventy-three-ish feet high from Lowell Road, or actually comparing the new field house to some of the existing buildings on campus. So these lower, on the lower right-hand side, these, this is the new field house. Some of the other buildings on campus, like the chapel, parts of Elliott Hall are taller than the field house, the steeples. But you can see that there is a mix of different sized buildings on campus already. Depending on the program, that's really what's setting the size and height of some of these buildings. We did do studies from Lowell Road since our building is closest to Lowell Road as far as public space. And each of these images, I'll show you an existing view and then I'll show you the view with the field house plugged in. This is at Lowell Road, looking south. On the left is the Middlesex Campus. Some of the houses you see here are the faculty houses on campus. With the field house, you'll just With the fieldhouse, you'll, just because of how close it is to those houses, you really aren't getting that full sense of mass because there is a buffer between the houses. And in all of these photos, these are taken in the winter time. But during the summer, along Lowell Road, the, just the shielding from the, the trees and the shrubbery really wouldn't even give you as much of a view as these views are showing here. Directly across the street, this is from the address sixteen twenty-nine Lowell Road. You can see these are the faculty houses that were completed last year. Plugging in the fieldhouse, again, just because of how close the fieldhouse is to those houses and the angle of view, the, the fieldhouse is relatively shielded as far as the main mass of it. And again, this is a winter time photo. There is no green or there are no leaves on the trees, so keep that in mind. And again, from the south, plug in the fieldhouse. Here. One of the things that came out as far as a question from one of the butters was how much the building could potentially cast shadows onto Lowell Road and onto properties that are to the west of the campus. We did, we did saddle studies at the equinoxes and at the extremes, so the summer and the winter. What we found, if I am able to zoom into, whoops, these views is that for the most part in the morning is when the building would be casting shadow onto Lowell Road. In this specific example, the spring and fall equinoxes. Um, the shadow that our building is casting is kind of mixed into the tall trees, which are already on Lowell Road. So we're not casting more shadows than what is already being cast by the trees. And really, once you're past that kind of afternoon point, um, even in, in the spring, once you're past early morning, there is no longer shadow being cast by the building onto Lowell Road. And that's true, even in the, even in the winter, where there is kind of a lower sun angle. I will end it there. Like I said, there are other supporting materials that we presented at the previous hearings that we can go over if there are questions, but I will leave it there and kind of open the floor.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the presentation. Um, any questions from, uh, from the board? Elizabeth Ravi?
I'm just curious how the, the parking spaces fit in. Are they, they're at grade? So is the first level kind of, you know, are those multipurpose courts gonna be on the second level? Cause the parking is underneath them, or I, I'm not sure I fully understood.
Yeah. So on this, on the, so lower, the lower left here is the floor plan. So on the south, you're entering at a higher level because of the fields than on the, on the north side. So there's almost a full level difference. On the north side, you enter the parking at grade. You'd go up a half level, or you go up a full level to get to the courts level, which sit on top of the parking.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Um, Elizabeth?
Um, I'm not seeing comments from the neighbors, so it sounds like the, the butters haven't, um, beyond the shadow study, haven't made any comment.
Well, or, or they're, they're at the planning board level potentially, because that's, we, we won't be voting on this tonight because they're, they're still on planning board.
Got it, okay.
Um, and once they get out of planning board, and we get the, the recommendation from the planning board, we will, uh, then vote on, on it. And sorry, I was not clear enough here that this is, that this is just inform, uh, informative to us tonight. So there's no, there's no vote, and, uh, this is for us, so we can start chewing on this and mulling on, uh, mulling this over for, for when they get, uh, for when it gets out of planning board and we get, uh, the planning board's, uh, report.
Great, okay, good. That makes sense. That, that would be my, um, concern. The plan obviously looks lovely and quite thorough, um. But yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Butters would say.
Yeah, so, you know, I, I, I saw, um, I just, you know, I, I actually just choked a little bit when I saw the, uh, the photo simulations. Um, I've seen a few in my, uh, over the course of my career, and I must say, these, these don't do you much favor. I mean, in my eyes, if I were a neighbor, I would be, you know, I would be commenting on that. And I would be asking for a lot of, uh, evergreens, but it just, just that, that's my, my two cents that it, it's those, yeah. Um, no. I've seen a few of these, and I've seen also a few after, after construction and, and, and we, uh, reviewed what we presented. And, um, they, yep. They are not always as, uh, as, as what you see. So, and I, I think this is, this is a pretty overwhelming structure. That being said, um, one of my questions, one of my requests to the applicant is that on your next presentation, um, that we get a bit of a, uh, thorough, um, reasoning, a thorough argument of how this building, um, needs or, or helps you with your, uh, the educational function of your institution. Um, I think that would be very helpful, uh, for the board to have, that, that this is, this is really gonna be helping, um, your mission.
Yep.
That's a, that's, that's, and I'm, you know, um, I would like you to tell me why this would be, you know, in, in, in other, in not. Yeah. In other words, I would like you, you guys to tell me why this, uh, would fall under the Dover Amendment. Um, so that's.
So, so Theo, this is Kurt. I, um, just in, just a general comment to, to your initial uh, observation is that we, we are co-curricular schools. Uh, Middlesex has pride itself, uh, typically in that duality of education and sports. Um, and in the last, I'd say, last fifteen or so years, it's, it's really favored heavily on the arts and education side where the sports fields really haven't had, the sports actual structures haven't had any real significant update since two thousand and two. Um, so part of the mission, overall mission of Middlesex, this isn't really gonna increase student population or traffic by any means. But hopefully, uh, attract, start to attract the more well-rounded student athlete, uh, and, and be more competitive in the ISL realm on the sports side, as well as maintain the academic excellence.
Good. Yep, um, thanks, thanks for that, good. Uh, you know, that's actually an important point to, uh, to make, what you just said, that this will not increase student enrollment, right? So, you know, traffic should be, if there's an increase, it should be negligible. So that's, that, that, that's an important point to make. And, and I think, I mean, I just haven't heard that argument, that this, this is, is part of you, you know, helps you, your, um, it helps the educational function, you know, or supports that educational function of, uh, what you're doing on campus. So, and I, I would just like to have that argument. I think that's, that's important.
Sure, we'll, we'll be sure to note that in the next, in the next review.
Thanks.
And I think, hear a little more too about the gable roof choice. You know, I heard mentioned that it's to fit with the aesthetic of the campus, but, um, you know, I, I don't know, like, it, a lot of the height is in the roof, right? So, and we have to kind of make this no reasonable alternative finding. And so, you know, if we could just get a little more of, well, we thought about doing it without the gable roof, and that's why it was, it wasn't reasonable because, you know, for whatever reason, right, like, um, yeah, cause, you know, I, I'm with you, I, you know, it's, it's, it's a very imposing structure, so, uh, I think I'd like a little more.
Yeah.
All around that.
Um.
Yeah, it's, and it's imposing, and you know, my comment about the, uh, the photo sims, sorry, uh, Elizabeth, to catch you off there, is that it was, it's, it's an imposing building. And, but, you know, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. Um, you know, if you build something, you're gonna see it, right? Like just, you know, how can we indeed fit it in well? And, you know, obviously, this is the architecture of this building is pretty darn, uh, nice. Um, I'm not expecting anything else from CBT, so, um, it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be good-looking building, so, but it's, you know, but let's be honest, it's a big, right, so. That's it. Elizabeth, sorry, I cut you off there.
That's all right. Um, thinking again from a Dover Amendment point of view, I'm curious as far as, um, with Middlesex, what percentage of the students participate in athletics? Is it kind of an after-school thing, or, um, how involved in your mission is it?
So, so this is, it's a great question, Elizabeth. So really, the requirement for the students is, is pretty much all students play a sport, two to three sports, um, uh, throughout their academic year.
So even, even a kid who is music-focused would have to play a sport?
Right, and so not, and, and not a high compete level. So we have a second and a third team, right? So, so there's, you know, there's the elite varsity athlete, then there's the JV, and then there's the the kids that really wanna have fun. So I think to Lonnie's point earlier was, was that it's really, we're, we're limited on, on space, uh, especially with inclement weather with, and, and we have some of these practices going up until nine, nine-thirty, almost ten o'clock at night. Um, and so we're just trying to strike that balance between involving everybody. And, and the important thing too, I think Lonnie mentioned it, this is really, the structure is an overall student experience. What's the important piece is that this is actually gonna give us more coverage, shelter and security for the commuter, for the kids that actually commute. Uh, and it's, so that's a very important piece, is that this is gonna be an integral part to sort of maintaining, containing and, and being able to kind of create a more secure atmosphere without, you know, obvious security measures in place. This is, um, this is really a student experience center.
Okay.
So this is, you know, the, of course, everyone on our side is very excited about it, but the idea is not just to cater to the athlete, it's to every student. There's gonna be, you know, the central entrance, uh, the student, student common area will actually have lockers and, and sort of the, the cubby thing. So it's, it's really gonna kind of bring the whole, it's gonna be blended into the overall atmosphere of the entire school, not just an athletic facility.
Okay, well, and it sounds like all your students are athletes to some degree, so that, that helps me understand that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Great, um, let me open it up, uh, to the public. Any members of the public, uh, wanting to speak on this application? Please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, I'm gonna close the public comment section of this hearing. Um, and, um, any further discussion, members of the board? Um, I think we gave the applicant, applicant here a little bit of a shopping list.
Mm-hmm.
And is there anything else you want them to look at bef- uh, before they come back?
I, I agree with Ravi about the roof, that we would need to understand there was no reasonable alternative.
Yeah, yeah. Good, and that's, that's, that's that's a good point. And then also, I, I think, well, and I think the fact that there was no, uh, no increase in enrollment, but still having parking covered under the building, I think is, uh, is an important point to make for the, for the applicant. Cause that obviously pushes, pushing the entire building up by, what, ten, eleven feet? Um, so, um, so that's.
I'm, I'm just curious if it was studied without the parking underneath with additional, um, space to be used by students?
Students, students and staff, there's.
Yeah.
Of that.
Well, the parking was always a part of it because there is an existing parking lot, and as you know, there is,
Oh, I see.
you know, especially during big events, you know, parking's at a premium. So we've always considered the parking at the lower level, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if that's it, then, um, I'll take a motion to continue this to our um, September nineteenth, uh, hearing, and Kim, if you can get a time from your place.
We have seven thirty.
Seven thirty. Good. So.
I can move, I move that we continue the application of Middlesex School for Special Permit and Site Plan Review under zoning bylaw section six to eleven, eleven, six and eleven, eight for a new athletics practice facility with a height waiver to seventy-two feet, nine inches at fourteen hundred Lowell Road to our meeting of Sep- of September nineteenth at seven thirty PM.
I second that.
Um, all those in favor, Ms. Faria?
Aye.
Um, Ms. Dwyane Lannett?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Uh, see you on, uh, in September.
Excellent.
Great, thank you very much.
Uh, and thank you, thank you, thank you for coming and, and giving us sort of a, uh, an update and so that we know what we can expect, uh, once the time comes, uh, that we need to vote on this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Cool. Last but not least, seven fifteen, Turov Residences LLC for a common driveway and use variance pursuant to zoning by law sections, uh, one point three point eight, five point three point eighteen, eleven point seven, section four, table one, principal use regulations to allow for a common driveway serving more than one lot and to allow for multifamily dwelling use over such common driveway at two seventy-five Forest Ridge Road. Um, Tom Swaim is back. Good.
Good, hello.
Excellent, excellent. Um, so we, I think, closed, uh, uh, closed discussion last time, uh, when we're all together. Uh, um, we gave, we requested, uh, the applicant to, uh, to write the, uh, sort of the meat of the decision, which they did. The draft decision was handed to us. Um, and I think it was, I would assume it was posted on the, on the website. I'm pretty certain it was. So everybody had time to read it. Um, I did not have any comments. I thought it was pretty much what, what I expected. So I don't know what, uh, the other board members have on it, whether there's any additional comments. Um.
I did not.
I have no comment.
Neither.
Nor did I. I thought it supported the, if the board votes to grant it, I believe that the decision drafted supports the approval of the application.
Thanks, Tom.
Well stated.
So, that said, you know, I would entertain a motion. Unless there's anything else that, that you all wanna discuss, but, you know, I think if you all like the draft decision, then let's make it a final decision through a vote.
Uh, I can make a motion. I move that we approve the application of Turov Residences LLC for common driveway use variance pursuant to zoning by law section one, three, eight, five, three, eighteen, eleven, seven, section four, table one, principal use regulation to allow for a common driveway serving more than one lot will offer multi-unit dwelling use over such common driveway, two seventy-five Forest Ridge Road, uh, and adopting the draft decision, uh, that was circulated to the board, uh, ahead of the meeting.
I second that.
All those in favor, Ms. Fia?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Dwyane Lannett?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well. Congratulations, um, variance approved.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thanks for being here. Um, I think that was, that was a great improvement. If this, uh, this all goes forward, it's a great improvement to the plan. And, um, yeah, look forward to, uh, to continuing the discussion and making, uh, making the plan even better than, than it is, so.
I agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Um, I think that's it.